Recording in progress.
I want to order the county commission meeting for September twentieth. Commissioner Beatty, would you lead us in prayer?
That's great. Heavenly God, thank you for letting everybody get over here safely tonight. Give us the wisdom and insight to do what's right for the country, the county, and our communities. And still keep in mind all of those that have lost family, farms, property, and let them persevere through these problems. Jesus Christ created.
Amen. Fair and honest standing for the plate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mettle court, let's go, roll the plate.
Randy Simpkins.
Here.
Jeff Eby. White McElwain.
Here.
Stacy Beatty.
Here.
James Dawson.
Here.
Becky Spicer.
Here.
Paul Buckner.
Here.
Clayton Ellis.
Here.
Mike Petty.
Here.
Danny Williams.
Here.
And DeHaze.
Johnny Ray.
We have a quorum. Hadn't heard of Commissioner Eby. Commissioner Hayes is still a little bit under the weather. She hopes to be back with us in October. First, order of business is approval of amendments of the August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one meeting. Motion by Commissioner Simpkins to have a second. Second by Commissioner Beatty. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of vote by stating aye? Opposed? Thank you. Item number two is committee reports. Any committees to report? Hearing none. Item number three is public hearing. Public hearings to amend the Dixon County zoning resolution, Article Three, general provisions, to add traffic study guidelines and Article Eight, administration enforcement to add section nine point oh nine one, application for rezoning. Mr. Darnell.
In the packet you received last time, you have a copy of the traffic study guidelines, the two amendments to the zoning resolution. This is something the planning commission has worked on for quite a while. I hope you had a chance to read it, and this is, what this will do will make things easier when somebody, that way when they come in, they'll know when it's required or what exactly is required. This will also give them, make it easier for them to make decisions, which hopefully will, you know, benefit the county.
Is there any direct questions from Mr. Darnell now? Did y'all understand that? Would you like some clarification?
I've got a few questions.
You're just going to do that before we open up the public hearing?
So was this a template that was kind of taken from another community?
We, they had got the runs from some of the surrounding counties and cities, and this was kind of put together in a package that they thought would benefit the county the best. So it's a combination of several of them.
So the point to do, it looks like you got, it looks like you got a cessment of the traffic cessment then, so you're going to break down and you're all.
Correct. If you're going to a more intense rezoning, or if you're bringing a subdivision that's got more than fifty new lots, it's something, you know, because the county roads, you know, it's something they think needs to be looked at in case that, you know, improvements are needed.
Thank you. You have another question, Commissioner Williams? If you don't, Commissioner Beatty?
Is this going to be consistent with what like the city Dixon is going to have?
Yes. That was one of them that, yes.
Because there's been some conversations about creating a standard that everybody's going to.
This was based on several of the committees around here, and they thought this was the most effective for the county. Because usually the way it was, if somebody brought something to the planning commission that was big, at the preliminaries of the time, the planning commission would decide, hey, we want a traffic study. So now this will save them time, and they'll know upfront they have to have that, and what exactly type of study they're looking for.
Is the city going to adopt something along, I mean, like the city?
They're working on something. I don't know if it's going to be exactly like this or not, but yes, they are working on something too, yes.
The reason I ask if you've got a project right in Highway forty-six South, okay, there's going to be right there.
Right.
The line of the city and the county, you'd like it to be consistent, I guess?
Right. Well, it's like our codes. We're all on the same, for the most part, yes.
Any other questions at this point? Commissioner Dawson.
Yeah, and then did this all arise from the Bureau of Labor?
That originally is what started it, yes.
So when, when, but now if the land is originally, if it's zoned, whatever and everything, it's not like, do you, when you come up for, come up for.
Correct. It wouldn't, you know, at that point, it wasn't a rezoning, but it was something they knew there was going to be heavy traffic, so it was, you know, they wanted to study, but they wanted it to say certain things, and they weren't happy with it. So this was a guideline to try to make, put everybody on the same page.
Yeah, what I'm, what I'm saying, I guess, is when you once the property is zoned, then all others got to comply with the property zoning.
Correct.
Are you trying to change the, the outside part of it? Like somebody that wanted to put a road in, you said the traffic won't, it won't work, whatever. Would that change the zoning?
It would not change the zoning.
Okay, so what would the person do with, I mean, the property if he couldn't do the other? I mean.
Each zoning has, you know, certain things that are allowed, but say if you wanted to put in a fifty to hundred lot subdivision, you know, if it's zoned for that, you're still going to want to know, you know, are the current roads going to be able to handle the, all the extra traffic? So, but no, it's not going to change the zoning at all.
Okay, well, see, we're going to look at the zoning of the properties before they, because I know that's an afterthought, that's a thing that's zoned for years.
Right.
Well, you need to know what.
Right. But this, this helps going forward. You know, if somebody wants to rezone something, this would be one of the first steps they're going to have to, have to do. But it doesn't change what's been done in the past.
It seems to me, and tell me if my understanding of this is incorrect, but it takes away the arbitrary nature of a traffic study, that now, on the front end, you will know if a project requires a traffic study.
Correct. You'll know what, you have to have one, and also, kind of the guidelines, when you read it, tells you exactly what they're looking for in that traffic study.
Any other questions, Mr. Darnell?
Well, it does look kind of like what we got into a little bit. I'm about to make this note. Some of the, of the roads, it's their name.
Mm-hmm.
It's like you've got a subdivision in the area, but it's got to go down an existing road to get to that. And if you're going to have an amount of traffic on it, will that have to also ta, take into consideration of the, the road that gets you to that?
Correct. When you read through the whole thing, it tells you the perimeter around it and the different number of intersections from that, yes. You want to have the traffic count going all the way to it.
So we won't need to have a road study if, if anything like that are to be done like we did out there?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question?
We always research these. I mean, has this been researched? Talked about? Or is this just a?
Yeah, this has been talked about. The members of the planning commission, they have a work group, and they've worked on this pretty much for almost a year.
Are you hearing the case?
Excuse me.
I don't see.
I'm sorry. My, I need hearing aids.
I need to.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Darnell. At this point in time, I'll clear the public hearing open for the amendment of Dixon County zoning order, resolution, Article Three, general provisions, they have traffic study guidelines and Article Eight, administration enforcement to add section nine point oh nine one, application for zoning. Public hearing is open. Is anyone here to speak on this issue? Anyone to speak on this issue? Anyone to speak on this issue? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. Next item, business resolutions. The first resolution is financial reports from the, all school funds. Resolution to authorize certain amendments to budgets. Now, the financial reports, that's not it. You've received the financial reports, not a resolution for that. The vote here is to accept those. Dr. Weeks is here tonight. Is any questions for Dr. Weeks? Hearing none, I'll open the floor for a motion, or approval. Motion by Beatty to have a second. Second by Williams. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of vote by stating aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item number two for schools, budget amendments. Resolution to authorize certain amendments to budgets established for the county's general purpose school fund, one forty-one, federal project fund, one forty-two, and/or the cafeteria fund, one forty-three. There, this was the movement of the funds. It was not any additional money. It was money to move from one fund to the other. I think you're moving into federal funds, as I recall? Yes. That is, that amendment, I'll open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Beatty, second by Commissioner McElwain. Any questions or any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of vote by stating aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item number three, three is a resolution to establish term and appointment memorial committee. You have that before you, and I'm not going to read the whole resolution to you, but the issue we had with that, when we established a memorial committee, we had specific names in there, which several of those people are no longer with us. This way, it becomes a standing committee that we'll make regular appointments to, and I'll, if this is approved, we'll make appointments to this committee. As you recall, the memorial committee set up rules that were approved by the commission to review applications for naming of roads and bridges after individuals in this county to honor them. We put this independent committee together where they can look at it and apply the rules to it, and then bring it, or send a recommendation to the county commission for us to make a final decision. So that's what this does. Any questions? Hearing none. I'll open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Reed, second by Commissioner Beatty. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor of vote by stating aye? Opposed? Thank you. Item number four is reduced speed limit, resolution to set speed limit on public road, no to swift road. This was in your commission district, Mr. Beatty. We handled this over the highway department and to the sheriff's department for their recommendation. Have they made a recommendation back to you?
No. Have y'all, was y'all able to go out? I went out and rode the, the road, and the engineer may speak more. It's more like a lane, and none of you are familiar, it's still a car chip.
No.
It's it, but it's very narrow at this point. I think it's one house, maybe two toward the end before it gets to, isn't it?
There, it's a little bit, from the other side.
Yeah.
Okay, so north forty-eight over south.
Okay. It's a cut through, it's a cut through from Parkport to Miceau over there. They're coming, when they come in from Parkport, it's a downhill, they just got there, they're coming off that hill, but it's not, it's two tenths mile.
Well, at this point in time, the standard speed limit on posted is forty-five, and were you asking to go to thirty-five?
Thirty or thirty, serious, I mean, what do you, thirty-five is what we need to run back up. I'm amazed at thirty-five.
Okay, thank you. The motion by Commissioner Beatty is for thirty-five miles an hour to reduce the speed limit on Swift Road, to have a second. Second by Commissioner Dawson. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of vote by stating aye? Opposed? Thank you. Is this a new resolution on the clerk in room? I've got two of them here. Okay. Okay, that's it. This resolution is to close a portion of McClarkin Road. We discussed that at last time. The only thing, thing on here, I think, would that come out of, whose district did that come out of? That's on yours, Commissioner McElwain. The only thing that we want to point out here that we do not have is exhibit one. So what we'd like to do on this, to go forward with this, is approve this pending the letter from the owner. We do not have that at this point in time, so it's not connected to this resolution. But what we probably asked for, if, is the will of the commission, is approval pending receiving of that letter. Is that the way to do that, Mr. Reagan?
It is, and, and this was considered by the planning commission, as well as, I think, by the highway department. And it's just closing the last hundred and ten feet of the road, and there's one property owner that owns the land there, where the hundred and ten feet is. So that's the one that's asked for it verbally. We just want something in writing from them.
Thank you. Okay. That's a motion by Commissioner McElwain to have a second. Second by Commissioner Dawson. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of vote by stating aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item number six is a resolution to amend the official zoning map of Dixon County, Tennessee, as adopted in Article Five, Section five point oh two oh of the zoning resolution of Dixon County, Tennessee, by rezoning parcel oh thirty-nine point oh one, and tax map one twenty-one from R one pud to A one agriculture. This is, was a public hearing thirty days ago on this, along with the first vote on this. This has come back, this is actually, will make this zoning change. Is any questions for Mr. Darnell on this before we go forward? If not, I'll open the floor for a motion. Whose area was this in?
Second.
Second?
Third.
Is it third? Is this your motion, Commissioner? Well, second's not here, so we'll just move on down the road. So motion by Commissioner Buckner, second by Commissioner Spicer.
It's second, second.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of vote by stating aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item number seven, resolution authorized execution of a thirty-six month lease contract with Coadient Incorporated for postage meter related services and supplies. This is the postage meter. Typically, those are done, if they're done for a year, it's handled by the offices, but this is a contract that extends over a year, so it requires county commission approval. Open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner McElwain, second by Commissioner Reed. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of vote by stating aye? Opposed? Thank you. This is a resolution, this is item, yeah, on my, yeah, item eight, jail security equipment contract. Resolution authorized county enter to contract with Life Check Systems, LLC, for the purchase of one or more licenses to utilize certain technology in connection with the county jail. This is what Sheriff Eads discussed with y'all last, two weeks ago on this, and this is also the reason of this. This is budgeted funds, but because it's a two-year contract, it requires your approval. So on this, I'll open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Spicer, have a second. Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor of vote by stating aye? Opposed? Thank you. Item number nine is a resolution authorized county execute contract to set an award of grant funds from the state of Tennessee to purchase video arraignment system permitted by the grant, and to amend the county's general fund one oh one relative to receipt expenditure of the grant funds. I'll remind you on this, and it shows in the body of this, the grant is a hundred thousand dollar grant, but the, that's, that's the total amount, but it's, it's not the total amount. The total amount's a hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five, so to receive the hundred thousand dollar grant to get all the equipment, we need to amend into the budget, sheriff's budget, ten thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars to get that match of a hundred thousand dollars of that. So I'll open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Simpkins, second by Commissioner Reed. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of vote by stating aye? Opposed? Thank you. Item number ten, resolution authorized county mayor to enter formal negotiations with an unnamed company and to authorize industrial development board of the county of Dixon, Tennessee to negotiate and accept payments and lieu of taxes with respect to the unnamed company to reopen the Conagra vans facility at the county's industrial park. This is the, this is the pilot program we discussed thirteen days ago. Conagra has sold to another company that was going to carry on similar operations there. We are going to continue to earn the taxes we're earning today on the real estate, and what they're asking for is a pilot payment lieu of taxes for, on fifty million dollars of personal property, which is business property, non-real estate on this. So instead of a normal pilot program being over a seven-year period, this will accumulate over a nine-year period, and then become a hundred percent at that point in time. It not only saves the jobs that Conagra had, the roughly three hundred jobs, it's going to add about a hundred jobs to that with the average wage of twenty dollars an hour. We felt like this was a good deal. That's why we brought it to you. And also, earlier tonight, the city, Dixon City Council voted to approve this on a seven to zero vote. Also, if it's approved here, then our, it'll go for the industrial development board on October second for their approval, and then hopefully we can get the, the legal documents done shortly thereafter and get the new company on board. So I'll be glad to answer any questions on that.
Yeah.
I got the thing after our work session. Do they, do they present any kind of projected depreciation schedule where they don't try to depreciate everything out over eight or ten years, or do they, is that over twenty years? I'm just trying to figure out that fifty million, how quick the depreciation?
Typically, I think it's going to happen over a seven-year period, and I'm looking to Mr. Wilson back there to make sure the head nods on that. But we're already depreciated out where we are now with Conagra. The, we're down to twenty percent on, on how much, I mean, our, we're around two million? Two and a half million, so this will regenerate that at fifty million on that. So we'll go with depreciation schedule. The thing that we're not giving on this is, is a, on real estate. There's not a pilot on the real estate. It's on the books now, I think, for about two point six million. I think that's pretty close. I got half a nod there. But the sales price of this property is going to be over six million dollars, so we expect to see a revenue increase on real property. Good question. Any other questions? Be glad to answer them. Open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Beatty to have a second. Second by Commissioner Simpkins. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor of vote by stating aye? Opposed? Thank you. Just want to go back. I typically don't linger on an issue once it's passed, but again, we, we do so well in this community by finding good industries that come in here. We have some industries that come in here that we don't seek, but the ones we do seek that is going to add to improving the quality of life, I'm proud to do these kind of pilots, and I'm proud that y'all understand that, because this makes the community better. We're bringing higher payer, higher paying jobs, putting the industry back to work that we would have lost. We have, we had, I think, the fifth lowest unemployment rate last month in the state of Tennessee, so we would have lost three hundred jobs. That would have kicked us out of that, but at the same time, we not only regained those jobs, we've got another hundred, a hundred jobs. We're going to come out of this with better wages. So as we all know, the cycle of life, the economic life of things, we always have to be moving forward to find new projects like this that will enhance our community, because there will be businesses that pay ten, eleven dollars an hour, industries that will probably not be able to be here any longer, but that's part of the economic life. And the thing that we, I'll give you some statistics next week, but it, it speaks to our labor force and available labor, even though we have a limited number of people available for jobs now, the people that want to work here compared to the rest of the state, and the quality labor we have is why we get companies like this. So I appreciate y'all, and I appreciate the community understanding. By doing these things, we keep moving forward, and where, when we were excited when Dow Tile showed up eight years ago, offering fourteen dollar an hour jobs, and those were great. Now we're at twenty dollars an hour, so thank you. Next item of business is road barring paving. Let me read the correct one here. Resolution of Dixon County, Tennessee, authorizing the issuance of interest-bearing general obligation paving, capital A note, series two thousand one, two thousand twelve A, in an amount not to exceed one point five billion dollars, and providing for the payment of said notes. This money is prepared to be borrowed to do more paving. As we spoke earlier, last week, we took a half million dollars that the state gave us. We moved a half million dollars the month before out of capital improvement funds, because we were overfunded there, and now we have another million and a half. So all total, we're putting in two and a half million dollars extra in paving in Dixon County this year, and very proud of that. So I want to open the floor for a motion on this. Motion by Commissioner Buckner, second by Commissioner Beatty. This, these funds and the reason, again, I want to reiterate, the reason they're being borrowed, because we can transfer funds from every fund in county government except from debt service to anywhere else, because once we set that, the state has a fear of county may move money out after their budget's approved, put their debts in jeopardy. So we are not, we don't know exactly what we have until after we close the book. So we're overfunded in that, so we can take that money. We have to borrow it, but we'll pay it back before June thirtieth. We have the money to do that, so it's really going to be an in-and-out deal. It's about a thousand dollar origination on this at one and a half percent interest, so it's good to do. We have a proper motion, second on this. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor of vote by stating aye? Opposed? Thank you. Item number twelve that's listed is resolution authorizing county to apply for grant funds from the Tennessee Valley and Best Prep Grant Program and the Select Tennessee Site Development Grant. This was the, as y'all have read in here, this program requires a, a match where we're melding two programs together. One, the TVA grant, which would pay for fifty percent of this project, and the state development grant that will pay for twenty-five percent this project and the state development grant that will pay for twenty-five percent of this project. So it leaves local government on this industrial site with the remaining twenty-five percent on this which, half of, which we own this property joint with the city of Dixon, so there's three hundred thousand dollars that needs to meet this grant, so the city of Dixon will provide a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and we'll provide a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. What this does is takes the Canterbury site and grades it out, it doesn't get it pad-ready but it grades it out where it's appropriate for a company to come in that can look at it and come in and get it ready. It's, to get this and these two programs put together, it's quite a coup that we can do this, otherwise we'd be spending a lot of money to get this time a grant, which a hundred and fifty thousand is a lot, but to get a one point one million dollar grant, it's a good bargain for Dixon County and for the city of Dixon. Any questions for me? I'll open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Petty, have a second. Second by Commissioner Spicer. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor vote by stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. Talked with Sheriff Eads today, we have one issue here and I want to bring it up to you, I want to ask for you to suspend the rules, but I want to explain to you what, what we've done. It's one of those, the news is so good that we can't wait. The sheriff department received a grant for fifty-eight thousand dollars to buy a vehicle and associated equipment. Unbelievably, the grant got here so fast, the vehicle is ready to be delivered and, and the grant money is already in the bank, so we, we were not prepared to have this on the agenda, so because it showed up so quickly, the sheriff's department can take possession of this truck, it's a hundred percent grant, there's no county money involved, but we need to get that approved so the, on the state contract, the car dealer that needs to be paid because they have a vehicle on lot that they're ready to deliver to us and so we need to get that knocked out tonight. So I'm going to open the floor to ask for suspension of rules and look for the, a motion and second on that. Motion by Commissioner Simpkins, second by Commissioner Beatty. Any discussion on suspension of rules? Hearing none. All in favor vote by stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. The rules are suspended to take up that item that I just brought up. Do you have any questions for me or Sheriff Eads? Open the floor for a motion for approval. Motion by Commissioner McQuaid, second by Commissioner Spicer. Any discussion?
This vehicle wouldn't be useful.
Commissioner, Sheriff Eads.
Yes, sir, it's, it's part of a COVID grant and we will be able, in addition to purchasing the vehicle, get a, a closed-end trailer with some tents and some PPE for any future COVID operations. That's what it was earmarked for and like the mayor said, it's a hundred percent grant.
Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor accepting this grant, vote by stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. We're back under regular business now. Other business was what we discussed earlier in the public hearing, this is your first vote to move this on to regular session thirty days. That's my work computer, I hope nothing comes up that shocks y'all, otherwise I'm going to punch the television out, but it's my work computer, it's because somebody sent it to me, it's not mine. First thing on the other business, amend the Dixon County zoning resolution, article three, general provisions to add traffic steady guidelines and article eight, administration enforcement to add section nine point oh nine one, application for rezoning. This is your first reading on this, it will show back up in thirty days. Open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Buckner, second by Commissioner Reed. Any questions or discussions? Hearing none. All in favor vote by stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. Any other business, the other, next item of business, approval of notaries. Typically we do these individually, but because we have a new county clerk here, we're going to vote on each one of these because I think it's about twenty-seven. She's such a good sport. No, Madam Clerk, would you read the notaries for approval?
We've got twenty-six notaries tonight. Ashley Story, Leanne Dogg, Leslie Shelton, Lisa Carrington, Melissa Ann Presgrace Farrell, Verinda Kay Holstead, Veronica Hollidge, Lindsay Chapel, Lauren Jarrett, Camille Feitzey, Catherine Kinsel, Tisha York, Zachary Porcher, Marty Beck, Brad Roberts, Judith Sloan, Leah Armstrong, Rebecca Winter, Sherry Owens, Kimberly Gibbons, Stacy McLeese, Jennifer Leathers, Marty Allison, Lisa Turner, Julie Ashworth, and Richard Pittwell.
Have a motion for approval. Motion by Commissioner Buckner, second by Commissioner Spicer. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor vote by stating aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Let me have a second.
We've had a frequent request mainly from Commissioner Beatty and so I finally remembered because Star Moore remembered, so when she remembers stuff, that means I remember stuff. We have a video up here of the building of the Justice Center, we've got the one-minute version here, so you're the kind of person who gets dizzy driving through shadows or ellipses or something, I don't look at that, so if you're going to watch about two years having that, that one minute where you can watch this thing, watch it go up, you know, many of you probably know that the camera mounted on our building watching the construction of the Justice Center beginning to end, so it moves pretty quick if you know how to hook your computer up to the projector or something. He's unbelievable, but recently I've hired a GMZ, so I'm trying to, I'm trying to get his old technology, you know? I'm with his nine, he's with his sub, but I don't know what it is today, but I'm going to get her here next time. Maybe make her home.
Get you some magic, if you got that kind of operating going on.
I'm telling you.
It's not married.
I'm going to come up. I don't even know what that screen is you're doing right now, I've never seen that.
Trying to.
Mirror screen.
You just want to show it on one?
I'm trying to show it on that one.
What shows that?
Turn it on. That's that white one?
You know, we built a, built a lot quicker.
Get your evidence.
Where is it?
That's our one.
Yeah, let's see. Not a white one, I see a silver one. I'm doing the, I'm looking at all the different, different stuff up here. I had cataract surgery, I got stuck in the eye when I was eighteen years old and they said one day you'll, you'll have cataracts and it took forty-seven years to get to it, so I can see so good out of my right eye now, I went from twenty-eight to twenty-two five. Maybe I should go back to twenty-eight, yeah. I won't get into it with you. Let's see how this works.
The only cost of that steel would be today.
I'm going to make it a couple of weeks. I'm going to do it again, but I'll wait a bit. There you go.
There you go. We'll do it one more time. Brian, do you mind swinging that where everybody might be able to see a little better, you We're going to put that on our Facebook page or website at some point in time, but thank you for, Commissioner Beatty for constantly reminding me of it.
Who's over the courthouse? Is this falling to your jurisdiction, I mean, anything or is it handed off?
That's a great question. All, all buildings in county government are under the administration of the county commission and you do that through the mayor, so yes.
That is my.
See, county government one oh one will be offering that in the last two Thursdays in there, so thank you Commissioner Spicer, she was there and remember that, but yeah, all buildings except school buildings are under the domain of county general.
Does WH take care of that building?
Yes.
The WH is actually housed in that building now on that and we, of course, he's, he's,
he's our director, we have two full-time maintenance people and then we have a part-time janitorial crews that work in all the different buildings on that, but yeah, WH is, has really been handed off to him. I think our one-year warranty deal runs out in the middle of November, we, because we took, that's when we took possession of it, so right now we still work hand and hand with Fireson on any issues that come up, so we're about to have a walkthrough with them, I believe during October, kind of a, the punch, punch list and then after that anywhere from a dead tree out front to the ceiling falling in, it'll belong to us at that point in time, so that's a good question.
Have any issues with the building?
No major ones, we've had some leaking issues around air units and those have been fixed and I think that with flat roof buildings, I think that's just supposed to happen on that, but not anything and with some of these, a couple of these grants we're working on, we're enhancing the security deals that already came with the building, so again, it's one of those, I was asked on the radio today and I said if, I, I think I'm always hypercritical of what I'm involved in, what I'm, but I said the team we had put together made this happen, I would give us anywhere from a ninety-nine point seven grade to a ninety-nine point nine and I'll go show you a couple of things that aggravate me, but it, it doesn't stop the function of the building, so we did very well on that. TW Fireson, they did a great job on it, so I mean, it's working really well, but after, certainly by then to November, they become our issues. But good. Any other questions on any issue? I know there's several of you represent the city of Dixon, so I'll make your announcement for you, Old Timers' Day starts at ten o'clock this Saturday and I think they, the pancake breakfast has been moved to Walnut Street Church of Christ, so if you want a pancake, is that seven o'clock in the morning?
Six to nine.
Six to nine. I didn't know anybody got up at six o'clock, so seven to nine for normal people, others can go at six if that suits them, I don't know why. So that's it. Unfortunately, the Charlotte Festival, it was canceled, we were up here, I think, we're waiting here back from Rob Fisher and National Weather Service, but we think there was two and a half inches of rain in about an hour and fifteen minutes time, so that's right. Mr. Simpkins and I, Commissioner, we're in a vehicle together and we were running the, sitting still running the wipers full speed and you still couldn't see, so I, I don't, I haven't seen it rain like that in a good bit in that short period of time. Any other announcements, anybody else got anything on Commissioner Reed?
Fall festival, what, what, second Saturday, it's October.
So that'd be October ninth? Okay, good one. Any other announcements, anything going up for the community?
We had a county, county emergency day yesterday night, interstate. So when that happens, I don't want to do that. We have tractor trailers, airplane in the world coming down, trying to drive across double range, across high swale and it's, it's mess out there when that happens. It's six eight or something really to, to try to get on the roads out there because traffic's just one car right there from the other. People just lost, well, drive the GPS in there and, you know, I said I won't do that, but it's, it's dangerous situation.
You're right, and again, that was westbound traffic I think was blocked and they were trying to get around to the one sixty-three exit and things that you do probably relatively using a passenger vehicle, there's trucks of size trying to go through places that semis and the large transport trucks have no business being on, but.
There'd be three foot tractor trailers down there, one trying to pull out along the road, one trying to pull in down there on East Pine, and it, it's, it gets, it gets pretty hairy out there with all that's going on and of course that bridges, bridges where East Pine goes on the interstate, it's a foot from there, tractor trailers can't get under there, so you know, that means it, it just bottomed down there, they just start circling around down there trying to find a way out and it's pretty bad.
Yeah, that's true. That's good, yeah, well, it's an issue, but it seems to be an issue everywhere. I got caught trying to get around Kingston Springs one day and I was on semis over on the backside of Kingston Springs on roads they had no business being on, but maybe someday our technology will cap up and warn tractor trailers that you don't fit down some of these roads, so it's a good point. Is there any other announcements? We do have one birthday and I wish, I know you well, but I'd like to remind you, it's Commissioner Hayes's birthday, it's on the twenty-fifth, so without, without her being here, if y'all have an opportunity to email or text or call or whatever your mode of transportation is, so yes, nine twenty-five. So it'll be, so I'm sure she'd love to hear from y'all because since she's not here to hear from us on that. Is there any other announcements?
I was going to say I've, I know a little bit about the recent papers today, we all know how the wave was decimated down there with flood and they had a fundraiser offered last week, I think raised a million dollars.
That's amazing, that's great.
It's all donated to people in that area. If you haven't been down, my grandson played football down there at Johnsville and we just came up through the town. And I tell you what, it's sad, drive through there and see all the, the old homes, all the bridge, the car, the wave are just decimated and thirty-five, they were working through there. It's going to take a couple of years. Two of the schools decimated. I don't know how thankful we are.
You're right, and that, it's a sight, unbelievable to actually see what it did and for the, at the trail of destruction left and then of course with twenty lives lost, I mean, that is just unbelievable. Just kind of heads up, there's going to be a couple of issues, you know, we always, we have a lot of things going on and, you know, typically this is, but historically it's been a slower time of year, but I'll, we'll have a couple of larger issues that I'll get with y'all here and try to talk with the individual over the next few weeks, it'll be on the agenda, but they're, they're all, they're positive issues, but we'll have a couple of bigger ones we'll need to deal with in October and I know everybody, y'all attend, y'all are good at your attendance, but we need to base the interest on this, on things, we're going to, one of the issues we'll be working with some issues on the sanitation department landfill, about some things we're going to do to help improve that and the other, we have a meeting tomorrow night, myself and Rob Fisher with the volunteer fire, y'all did some good stuff for them earlier in the year with additional funding and we're going to find some other things that maybe we can help them and anticipate both those being on the October fourth agenda, so appreciate y'all's interest on that and we'll, we'll be talking on some of these issues as we go, obviously I have to talk to you individually on those, but I want to prepare you for those because in November we're going to come right back into, we'll have redistricting, should be ready to go in November and then we'll probably have some, the rules on the American Rescue Plan funds that they don't have any final rules, there's a few, we, I've got, some of my staff has worked hard, about five members on a committee, putting things together about how we can spend that money to get the biggest bang for our buck, but the issue we have is we don't have a final rule from the, from the US Treasury on what we can and can't do. Some of the things are obvious, but we want to come back to y'all and we'll be working on that all winter into the budget time next year, we're not going to take on every project at one time because we want to give y'all an opportunity to. opportunity to seriously consider what we're going to present to you and how we can spend that money wisely and get a long-term use out of it, a strategic use as opposed to an immediate use. So like I said, typically, we slow down after budget time and then kind of crank it back up in February and March of next year. But we're going to have a busy winter months on this. So again, I know y'all are dedicated to what you do, and I just want to kind of give you a heads up. We'll have some full agendas here through the end of this year and probably January. So look forward to working with y'all on that. It's all good stuff. I don't, I don't mean a gloom and doom thing, but I just want to give you, you know, a lot of months, we just slow down, and we have those nine-minute meetings because there's nothing on board. But I think we'll have some more forty-five-minute meetings. So just want to forewarn you for that.
Big question. Will we, will this city onboard with the, turn down the old general hospital?
Will approve that. And the deal with the city is, basically, we're going to manage this project, having, we own the building, we own land, but it's beneficial to both. So we're going to manage it and split the cost on that. And so we treat them as partners in this as we go forward. We received the demolition bid. We accepted that, and I can't remember the exact number on that. It was, it was right around ninety-three thousand dollars. We had a bid on the demolition, remove that building two, three years ago for about eighty-three thousand. So where prices are, I was pleased. We had a, we had another bid that was much higher, but we accepted that bid. We, I think we signed the contract last week. Regardless, they have forty-five days to take it down. So hopefully here, by the first of December, that lot will be cleaned off. Jeff Corlou is working on the plans on that to design it. And it's not a, it's not like designing a building over here. It's going to be more shed and cover, but we want to put that together and then meet with the people that use the farmer's market to make sure it's workable for what they want. But we need to form something up, draw it up, and also work with our city partners on that. So, good question. Thank you. Any other questions on any issues? Appreciate everybody. I'll make the final announcement then. The next regular session meeting will be on Monday, October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, at seven PM in the Beaufortale Booty Reed Junior County Commission Chamber of the Dixon County Administration Building, Forecourt, Scare, Charlotte, Tennessee. Have a motion, second adjourned.
Recording stopped.